Call USD forty-nine, Education, Board of Education meeting for Monday, June third, twenty nineteen to order. First thing is approval of agenda.
I'm moved to approve, wait, okay, I'm moved to approve the agenda. Second.
It's been moved on second, and is there any discussion?
The only discussion I would want to share at this is the intention that it's over at eight.
I'm leaving it at eight.
It's a two-hour meeting, it's not going to go longer.
Bring the gavel at eight.
I don't know.
You guys do whatever you want to have.
We've run out of enough money to make it an hour.
Okay, it's not longer than two, let's put it that way. It can be shorter, I guess.
All right, call for the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Let's see, passes five zero. Next thing is the consent agenda that includes personal transactions. Motion to move through the personal transactions.
Also, I so moved to approve the personal transactions.
What's on the first question?
Sarah's, oh.
Nay.
Oh, no, no.
Boo.
I don't want to.
She didn't call for that.
Do we have to? Like, what happens if we don't?
Right.
I'm not sure how that works.
Let's figure it out.
Yeah, let's try it.
Let's try it and figure it out. All right, so, the personal transactions, Mike moved to approve, is there a second?
Set, I'll go ahead.
Okay, so she has a second. Is there any further discussion?
Just like say, Sarah, thank you for everything you've done, and you will be missed, but you better be dang sure you get a good replacement, or we'll find you.
And you will do great in your field.
You will do great.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Passes five zero. Moving on to old business, we will discuss the facilities and possibility of bond discussion.
I was with hopes to have five minutes, just to talk quickly as far as getting to the point where then the board takes hold of this and takes a direction with it. So, to start with, I wanted to end up a timeline over here. I wanted everybody to remember in two thousand one, a architectural firm's Decline and Brungardt ended up putting together a design, and it was really a continuation, it had to be, of the nineteen seventy-nine plan, because it's out where the high school is, there's a middle school plot there, it really was a continuation from what I talked to individuals of just continuing with that plan, and that extra land was going to end up having the middle school. That was kind of the idea. Now, there's no bond that started there, but there was, had to be some money put into it to have the architectural firm do some work and have that together. Then we ended up having in sixteen, a bond issue had been worked on for a number of years with HTK being the ones that was working on it. They came up with a plan of working with the needs, and identifying needs such as industrial arts program, sports participation, the growth of it, limited space, went through all the different needs that was involved there, and in the end, probably more so tied to a add-on and renovation plan. And it touched about everything. And it was around ninety-four million dollars, it was a twenty-year bond, and it was going to be thirty dollars for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, unless there was a sales tax piece that tied into that, which would have brought it down to eighteen dollars instead of thirty. And that was a twenty-year, and that was kind of what happened in sixteen. In seventeen, over there, we had DLR step in. DLR is who we worked with. The focus kind of changed there of being a focus on elementary schools needing the most attention, and that focus was also looking at new. Papers next to it identifies that the new was looking at, what was the cost? It was, I forget which building, maybe it was Wilson. Wilson was like seventy, seventy percent of what new would be, I think it's to the right there, Mike, it says a percent. Was it seventy?
Sixty percent.
Sixty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, Wilson renovation would be seventy-three percent.
Seventy-three percent of what new would be, okay. So, seventy-some percent is what they're talking. So, the focus went more to new than just renovation and adding on. And that was a seventy-eight million dollar project. We've talked a lot about where elementaries would be, if it's four is needed, or if it's three, or if it's two. And in this particular group with DLR looking at it, the size of three, the size of what three would bring to us of having four sections is what they were talking about, was what was suggested at that particular time. That was a thirty-year bond, and it was sixteen dollars, okay? It would have been sixteen, again, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. Then, we ended up taking that information after the twenty seventeen, and in twenty nineteen, which was just this last January, it wasn't that more work was done, there was work that the board did for review, then we had a six-month period that we just waited, and then it talked about the bond until January. In January of this year, all that was done was trying to take information that was kind of talked about after the last bond tried, and actually put together this information. DLR was involved in trying to help of bonding that together, and it became more of a mold between the last two bonds that were tried. It was twenty-nine million is what was kind of shared. It wasn't a new plan, it was more a matter of what we had talked about up to that point of twenty eighteen July, July twenty eighteen. That's when we had talked for a few months on that. This was a ten-year bond, and it would have been sixteen dollars per ten-year is what was being talked about for it. There was also a little bit with that mold together, the mill levy was really talked about in saying that in our particular case, a comparison, really, is we haven't had, we don't have bond and interest because we have no bonds. You know, the bonds aren't there, we don't, the other, and that goes back to the ninety, ninety-two is the last time there was bond. And the mill levy comparison puts us forty-three point six, there was one below us, that was Seward County, and that's forty-three point three, but there's others above us, forty-five, forty-nine, fifty-one, fifty-five, fifty-nine, sixty-five, these are the other ones. So, the idea is, we do have comparatively a lower mill levy of others. That goes to the mill levy, I would say, to leases. We don't have bond and interest, but we do have leases. And the information that was shared with you with that is just a matter that those leases is almost a million dollars is what we've been paying. Nine hundred thousand, there's a million, some of them kind of sloughed off, but basically, it's about a million dollars we're paying each year because of leases, okay? And, and again, there was set, there's a number of them that we've had for HVAC system, for classroom addition, for computer equipment, those are, that's how we're paying for this, is using that. Whereas, other districts have bonds, we've been using this part of it. The capital outlay, we have talked about a number of times, there are five major categories of capital outlay. You have the leases, you have the salaries for capital outlay, we're pulling that out, probably about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year, paying for the salaries or the wages for custodians and maintenance. You have transportation, you have technology, and then you have buildings and grounds. And if you add those up, you get about the amount, actually, you do get the amount, of what we're paying, or what we're getting for our eight mills to pay for capital outlay each year. What we bring in, the eight mills, it's being used up really in those five categories. And the only way I can see at this point of really quickly tending to that is turn things around with the salaries capital outlay. That's a quick switch if you wanted to, but it's going to have to then be paid all out of general fund. New monies that we end up having, that's one flip. The other is leases, just letting them slough off and not getting new leases, you know, that's, that's another way, because there's about close to a million dollars that's tied into it. We ended up with this, had surveys that were tied to this whole process as we worked through it. And I just want to point out that the surveys end up identifying that it has reasons for supporting the bond initiative and also opposing it. They're not surprising. They end up being for support, there's many that identify at the top that the age of the buildings that they need repaired. And the top for opposition is amount of taxes going up. I mean, it's not, it's not surprising. Funding is needed generally, and previous spending decisions, that was one of the issues there for it. One thing that was interesting in this survey that was done by Docking Institute at that time, is a matter of identifying very willing to pay for improvements with the school district for buildings, and somewhat willing adds up to sixty percent. So, there is a majority, it is over sixty percent. There's depends, and there's somewhat unwilling that adds into that, but sixty percent is saying either very willing or somewhat willing, and we kind of kept, we were looking at that when we were working from it. Then you end up having basically the strategic plan, we worked on it, of saying, what can we do with our capital outlay? How do we prioritize? How do we end up updating, and how do we standardize? To try to end up making sure that our work on our buildings is better. Well, one piece is, yes, we need the prioritization. And part of the conversation a couple of years ago was, should it be on the shoulders of Rusty and myself, or should there be someone from the outside that comes in and does that assessment and looks at it? We did go through the process of selecting, but then did not follow through with paying for that service, if everybody remembers that. In the whole process, too, standardized needs to be brought up. We want to make sure that it's standardized, building to building, so that there's more efficiency in our purchases and using equipment from one building to another, and try to do that. Then you have enrollment. I want to point out that we ended up having really professionals do this, it was RSP that did the work, and they put together a nice demographic study of Hayes area. And the Hayes areas enrollment, really, they went back to two thousand, two thousand one, and it was like thirty-two-hundred eighty-seven, went clear to twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two, and it's thirty-one, or yeah, thirty-one-twenty-one. The, it did, there was a dip at some point in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, but it is gradually going up, and we're seeing that. Our enrollment has been really pretty leveled this whole time. The other piece with it would be kindergarten roundup. We're talking about elementaries all the time, trying to decide, is there a super one that's needed in this district? Well, before I was here, I understand it was talked about quite a bit, and it didn't, it didn't get too much ground. Then there's talk about two, there's talk about three. In this case, our four ends up being, you can see the numbers change over time, that Roosevelt has had the greatest request for going to kindergarten, okay? We end up having the Google maps that ends up showing in the past, the, where it's plotted, and it shows like Roosevelt, you can look up on the screen there, we did that a couple of years ago, and we did it just recently, just actually, last week or two weeks ago. And you can end up seeing on the map that the plot shows they're spread out. I mean, it's not a matter of saying, because we have different elementaries, sometimes you get a stronger cluster in that area, but we just wanted to point out that it hasn't changed. A couple of years ago, when we did this, it showed that it was spread. Now that we're doing this again and looking at it currently, you can see that it's still the same kind of map, this is Roosevelt's, and it's throughout the whole of town. The issue there is just a matter of trying to, we have the information to make a comparison with either one of those, but the maps end up, the Google maps do show, breaking it down, either any one of those buildings, you can show that it's, it's spread out across the town. But this is calling the tail. The tail is, what is the reasoning for it? Is there less because we talk about Lincoln, trying to get away from Lincoln, and people just go, I don't want my child to go there if in three years it's not going to be, you know? Is that the reason why there's less and less kids? Is it because it's our oldest elementary? Is, I mean, there's, there can be other, is it because of location? I, I don't know. But definitely Roosevelt's has been high and continues to get higher in the requests, whereas the total number of students stays about the same. I mean, it's two hundred and forty, somewhere around there, two hundred and thirty is what the number of elementary students coming into kindergarten is.
How many didn't get their first request this year?
Twenty, twenty-one, I think it was twenty-one.
That's been pretty consistent with us here.
Last year, it was thirty, it was close to forty last year, it was about double.
And it would have been higher this year if we had not decided to, we had evened out all the classrooms, the size, it would have been more, that did not, though we chose to go with giving more than our first choice, not exceeding the limits, we said it's twenty-three, but there will be smaller class sizes only, and that's appropriate for their school population and why at risk, so we felt okay with that, but that was.
The stage is set that new people coming in from this point on will be going to Lincoln.
Right.
I mean, that's, anybody that's new, that's, that's where they'll be going. Kindergartners, I'm sorry, that's. And then last, I just want to point out, the map over there of Hayes on the ground, underneath that screen, RSP also put together information identifying the growth. The growth of Hayes is west and north. They, they indicate that, I don't know if that's agreed by everybody in here, but that particular area of, of Hayes is where the growth is. Now, this is where Roosevelt is, but I'm saying, this is what they identified as where the growth is. So, in, in leading to this point, that information is kind of where we're setting the point of having you talk. And we'll answer any questions we can, but it's the board really of what you want to do. We also recognize there's not necessarily any intention of any answers tonight. That's, that's not the, it's more a matter of direction of what, what you want to happen at this point.
Got a quick question for you, back to the lease, leases that you pointed out over here?
Yes.
Which ones could be taken care of reasonably by a bond? I suppose all, but we're probably going to lease computers from that.
Well, there's, there's one, there's one that can be taken care of quite quickly if things would happen with, we had talked about this, if the sale of, if the sale of Washington occurred, the old Washington building, that five hundred thousand dollars could be either funneled into the, the lease that we end up having for the Oak Park, or the lease for another one that would be off in just a year. I mean, just get rid of it within a year and make sure it's paid off. So, but to end up saying that a bond would end up, a bond would help in many different ways, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't end up immediately just taking this off.
I thought that's what you were getting at, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
And when you say the million leases, is that off of buildings?
No, no. The leases that we're speaking of is, is also for, there's HVAC, okay? There's some additions at the middle school, and there's the equipment as well, which was computers, okay, so.
And that fell off in last year?
That one fell off, yes.
Would it be helpful if you walked us through the most recent plan that we have, and what are the major, the one behind the last of that? That seems like that's.
Well, when, when that was put together, it was only, it was only brought up because of conversations that ended a year ago.
Right.
When, when conversations ended last July, it appeared this was the direction it was going. First off, it needed to be less, it could not be comprehensive, there's no way we're going to get the community to end up going with a ninety-four million, a seventy-eight million dollar plan, it needed to be smaller. And so, this is under, it was under thirty million. Also, the idea of a thirty-year was, no, not, not going, even, even twenty was a question mark of saying, that's too long. That's why it was a ten, okay? It was just ten years. It could be fifteen, but it was much less than what the others were. That was kind of the direction. The other piece is, when you do that, do you want to end up, they, they held on to, do we want to end up adding on to some of the buildings that have inadequacies, such as Wilson? Wilson is one of those buildings that a lot of people don't fully understand, because you can drive around it, it looks fine. Until you go in and really compare the size of classrooms to Roosevelt and Wilson, you don't understand two hundred square feet less in a classroom and what that actually feels like. It is smaller in so many ways. The cafeteria, which is also the gym, I mean, it, it's smaller. So, part of this plan was a matter of saying, okay, if the community will not, if the community is not in the support mode of buying, of putting a whole new building, buying a new building for elementary, if the focus that the, we understand that it needs to be elementaries, then let's take our, our best building for elementary, and our newest one is fifty-one years old, that's Roosevelt. We take it, we renovate it, we add on to it, and we make it actually a building that has at least five sections. It has three right now, but add two more sections, okay? If you did that, you could walk away from our oldest building, which is Lincoln. And in that particular case, immediately, two sections would take, the number's right there, of eighty-five, ninety, ninety-three kindergarten. I mean, you, you would fill it, I think, because of just requests, you know, the preference, the first choice of parents, pretty much immediately in that case. That was part of the direction with it. The only other piece that tied to this was, instead of trying to go over several different years of getting HVAC for the high school, because it has started, but if you remember, the only work that's been done on the high school for HVAC is the wrestling room, gymnasiums, and one other?
Multi-purpose rooms.
Multi, okay.
And then, we done one classroom just to see how it was going to work, one of the science rooms.
So, that's all that's been done. We would still be, the plans, we're using capital outlay money and trying to continue to do it, but it'll be several years. The plan was, just commit and get it finished. Use bond money and finish that particular project. And the last part of that was the, the middle school, and trying to add on to that cafeteria.
Right.
So, we end up having that really fit the size of what the middle school is there. So, it's cafeteria, it was renovation and add-on to Roosevelt, and then it was HVAC system. Is that what you?
Yep.
Okay.
Want to hear, I want to understand.
It, it really simplified, there's, there's three touches that happened there. And if anybody's questioning, I, I mean, some of these things you don't want to hear, you don't want to, but they're the three, probably our three best buildings. High school's the newest, the next one is, the next one is Roosevelt, and then the next one is middle school. Middle school's close to sixty years old, then fifty-one years old, and then forty years old for the high school.
So, Russ, I had a question for you. Looking through your chart you've got here and all that, are there some easy just views, you've got your plan, you've put some of these, a lot of bonds. If you had to pick one, what would you choose as your most important one, either to fix up or put on a bond issue, or just say, scrap that building, we don't need that, or if you wanted to?
Based on the way we prioritize the buildings, and looking at the bonds, basically, I've always put the high school, middle, or high school, middle school, Roosevelt in that top priority.
Okay.
Of HVAC right now, probably Roosevelt and the high school are running neck and neck, and if Lofflin was one to be considered, it's another one that's in that, in that same group as far as the work with Wilson, right in there too. I mean, they're, they're all about, equipment-wise, they're all about the same shape. High school, the type of system it is, we tend to have more failures with it because it's a water, water-based heat pump system, whereas like Roosevelt and Wilson are chiller units. When we have a failure on those, it's usually the entire building because it's a compressor unit or something like that that's going to take out the large section. Whereas, in the high school, it's independent units, and you lose smaller sections, but it's more frequently. And so, it's, it's all, they're all, they're all at that point. They've been maintained well over the years, they've all got a lot of age on them, and they're, they're to the point that they just need to be addressed.
And the piece that ties to that, I hope the piece that ties to that question is the understanding that if you have the HVAC system for the high school that was taken care of with bond money, if Roosevelt was taken, because that's the HVAC system for Roosevelt too, which is in need, and roof, I mean, I mean, there's pieces there, you, you take care of that money as well, you have all that money that's not going to be pulled from capital outlay. And the capital outlay money then can be redirected on the prioritization that's already existing, you just shove that down tremendously as far as these big projects that are at the top have been taken care of, and basically Rusty's able to, to drop down and take care of, put more money towards concrete at the high school, you know, or, or put more money, other projects that he has that's, that's long-term, and trying to get them taken care of.
Okay. Answer another question on that.
Yeah.
Just to give you an example, and Lance can probably help with this too, because part of it took place prior to me, like Roosevelt, they had a major failure on chiller systems over there on the compressor unit. And I know that, or my understanding is, I shouldn't say I know, but my understanding is that when they went in and brought in and rebuilt compressor and stuff, it was with the idea that that system was going to be replaced. So, that was put in sort of as a, a patch at that time, just to get it right. And that was prior to me getting here, and I've been here five years already. So, worked five years down the road just from that simple fix there. So, all that stuff's being pushed out quite a ways.
Okay. So, answer is everything, okay?
If you look at that sheet, there's a lot of yellow on that sheet.
Yeah, I was trying to sort it out.
Didn't you say that when you presented that to us, or that the way you had it, like Washington and Lofflin were ones that you weren't really going to put money to?
Washington and Lincoln were the two that I pretty much really had out of the, out of the group.
Schedule, really.
Right. And then I had Loff, Lofflin and Wilson sort of in the, in the.
Lower priority.
Lower priority, and then I was looking at the high school, middle school, and Roosevelt in that higher priority.
Okay.
And the piece that we don't talk about at times is Westside. We, we have it here, and it's worked for twenty-some years, but I was also always with the understanding that we're fortunate having it. It's really a great program, K through twelve, of providing service for, for students in this area that just need some mental health, extra services tied into it. There's no way that it can work without the, the financial assistance through the mental health, the, the local, local mental health services. But I always thought it was tied to a number, always at that number of twenty-five, forty is what the number was. And only in the last year was I informed that the number was based, not because of just how many they were willing to supply or provide, it was based upon facilities. They too ended up saying, if it was, if the facilities could hold more, they would consider providing the personnel to, that they would have more money that would be able to provide that too. So, whereas I was thinking all along, and, and the truth is, that building has as much concern as, as Lincoln and Washington, I mean, it does. But again, it's one that only has thirty, forty students in, so it doesn't get as much, as much attention, I would say, because of that. It's small.
Okay. Well, so, just trying to scope it all in. We've got, we've identified several years, decades worth, almost, of, of things that have to be done. And this comes back to the survey. So, and I looked at, you know, what you picked out here, you know, what are the reasons people want support it? Taxes, that seems to be, of course, is it going to cost too much?
Sure.
That's number one, is we might expect. Previous spending, lack of trust, that's something to work on, and then not understanding spending plans, that's communication, I guess the trust is a communication piece too. Taxes is a gut-level response to that. So, part of, I guess the reason I'm bringing that up is it comes down to that value that we think we can do, because as you said, it has a trickle-down. Once we pick one thing, we can do better, all boats rise, and if we do one thing, everything's going to get better. But I'm thinking like writing a grant that said, I have a fixed amount of money. We start out with wonderful ideas, you know, usually I have about a, well, Mike can attest by that, I may have fifty million dollars worth of ideas, but I can only ask for one million. So, it's narrowing it down to it. So, is the thirty million the right number? I mean, that, that would help me decide to begin to look at it. number? I mean, that would help me decide, to begin to look at it, because I don't think planning-wise, we know what we need, we've got this, it says strategically what we can do. But is the thirty million the right number? And I'm asking the rest of the board, no, not John per se. And Mike, you've done the surveys, where are we at on that?
Well, the survey we, that survey data we have is from 2016, and it's now nineteen. I would imagine if we didn't do the survey, or we found, then taxes will still be the big one. People just don't want to pay taxes, they get it. Lack of trust, I don't know. That was something maybe we are most trusted than the board was in the past, maybe that's better.
Thanks, really, the only one that's still on here who's the most trustworthy.
Oh, it's Lance, okay.
The most seniority.
Maybe that's something.
Put it on him, Barry.
I forgot what John pointed out, willingness to pay kind of question.
Just wants to have a number.
Yeah, it came back, if you read through all that, it's really not saying, they're not willing, the public is not willing to pay. That's not how it comes through.
Okay.
They're just saying there's a limit of how much.
What this survey didn't do is, it's not really a bond survey in a sense, it's a community survey.
Right.
We asked about these issues, but we didn't actually, I don't recall us actually asking, how much would you be willing to pay for that?
I think there was a question, and they're related to range, would you be willing to pay between such and such?
It's been too many years, I don't remember.
It was. And the answer came back in between ten and fifteen.
Right. Oh, okay.
It was ten and fifteen, and that was the issue, because then it came back that it was sixteen for the seventy-eight.
Right.
Wasn't in between the ten and fifteen. And then this one, this one is sixteen as well, but it's ten years. If you went fifteen, it would be into that ten and fifteen, but you'd have to stretch it to a fifteen-year instead of a ten-year to end up doing that. So part of it is a matter, there are those districts, and I know what you're asking, that there are districts that will survey and try to find out from the community, what does it seem like they're willing to pay? And then they work from that to identify what is the problem, what is the greatest needs, and basically work that that's the amount that they're going to do. So it doesn't, it's not a matter of saying what their needs are, because my goodness, if you go at the needs, the needs alone would say that this district, you could probably justify
Sure.
a hundred million dollars.
Sure.
Okay? But if you're talking about what is the reality, you don't go down that road again, when the community themselves is saying that's, that we're not going to support it. So if you're trying to do your surveys and all that information, saying, okay, what is reasonable, what could actually pass? That's where this came together with our discussions earlier, saying, do you believe this could? I mean, do you believe this is a project that could? In our, in my perspective, in my conversation with Rusty, is the idea of fixing up one of those elementaries so that it's almost, I mean, there's not a problem, but it's new. I mean, you've renovated it, you've added on to it, you have Roosevelt that goes from a fifty-year-old building to, it's in good shape, it's in great shape. And then also walk away from the oldest building, Lincoln. Just doing that alone for that under thirty million dollars is fantastic. Yes, there are people that would like to have the total amount, but that alone, just trying to get something done would be fantastic for capital outlay money. It would end up making a giant difference for, just like the project for the preschool. Everybody's, I know I'm reviewing something that, but you've got to understand, walking away from Munger and walking away from Washington is tremendous. It's not a matter of doing such a great assessment of saying, well, is Oak Park such a fantastic facility? Is that, the fact is, I think it is, but at the same time, that may not be as big an issue of walking away from two other buildings that are, you don't want to put money into them. You don't want to end up putting money into those buildings at this time. You want to put your money somewhere where there's a future, instead of just patching it. The thrill of not having to, I mean, I'll say in the three years I've been here, and understanding our facility needs, I have held my breath just thankful as heck that at this point, we didn't have to put the hundred, two hundred thousand dollars into the, into the plumbing, was it plumbing or sewer? Plumbing for Washington. Because basically, it was just a matter of when's it going to happen? And it still is. Now whoever's buying it has the resources and that, they plan on gutting it and redoing all that, but we don't want to do that.
Yeah, could but don't want to.
Yeah.
So what's the perception of the rest of you? I mean, is thirty million what you've got in a sense of, I mean, we had a survey, information, it kind of came out, we got kickback on the last two failed bond issues, that it's too much, or we don't know what you want, we're not clear. Some of that's communication, but I'm trying to get a sense of where we are, because I think a target number gives us a place to start.
I think you're there less, or you're going to look at several smaller, you know, in the ten to fifteen million, and trying to go through and just doing it in stages, realizing that obviously you're pushing things out much further, but I have a feeling that's where we're going to end up in that area.
I think that, if that's the route that we pursue, that we need to be very clear in communication when we're talking about the bond to the public, that that is the end goal, is that this isn't a one and done, that this is going to take several small increments, because this is the path that we're choosing to do this.
Well, I think we need to, I mean, we've talked about long-term planning, like beating a dead horse, but I think at the end of the day, we need to have all of that lined out. There needs to be, this is what this money is going to go for, as soon as this is done, this is phase two, this is what's going to happen with phase two. Once this is done and this bond is passed, this is phase three. And I mean, basically have a spelled-out plan of exactly what we're going to do. And to me, that seemed to be one of the biggest things that I heard from people, was just there was no plan. I mean, we talked about it, you know?
Yeah, no, and maybe that's part of it. So if we pick a number, and I'm, is it five, five bond cycles that we're looking at? And is there a time that must be between bond cycles, or is it?
Oh, no, but it's reasonable when you're talking about, you don't, that's why it's tied down to like ten years, instead of saying twenty years, and then because so much, shoot, ten years from now, how many of you will be still on the board, you know?
The other issue you have is the first bond go-around will be quote-unquote, I mean, through the state, we can go forward with it, because we haven't had one for so long.
Right.
The next go-around, we're back in the lump with everybody else. So there's no hundred percent guarantee that, you know, even though we want to do something, that it's going to be approved, or that we're going to be able to each year, or each
Cycle.
cycle that we do.
Right. So that means maybe the thirty might be a good place to start, maybe. Then how much does that add to your cap? Say that, say that we move forward, and I'll just pick a number, twenty-five maybe million, just something we think we could do. How much is that, how much does that advance your schedule on the critical needs chart, your treatment?
Without exactly knowing what that twenty-five is buying, if you're doing the HVAC at the high school, and you're doing a renovation at Roosevelt, I'm assuming, because there was some work at the middle school, figured into that too, wasn't there?
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, which So, and that was at the thirty, are you leaving the cafeteria piece out of that?
No.
Or, I mean, that's what I'm
That's a crazy place.
I don't disagree. So looking from the building, a building standpoint, if you clean up, problems, the issues that I have at Roosevelt, and we clean up the HVAC, we're already working on infrastructure as far as our phone systems and all that there, it's going to leave you some envelope issues at the high school that we'll still need to address, and work on that. But the prioritization's going to be what we do with Bothell and with Wilson, because the greater needs going to be at the HVAC, whether we address those issues and bring those up, or whether we go back and try to address some of the envelope issues at the high school, or as far as exterior and that kind of thing.
We would need to be, yeah, we would need to be for sure that twenty-five million would fix the HVAC and give the space at Roosevelt that allows us the flexibility to walk away from one of those other buildings, because that, in my opinion, that may not allow any work at the cafeteria.
Yeah, that's what, where I was headed, that we wouldn't be looking at the middle school with that, you're going to probably still be in that thirty.
Because if the goal is to walk away from some of the poorer buildings, I think twenty-five million's allowing Roosevelt and the HVAC clean.
Okay. So that pushes us back towards the thirty million mark?
Well, I think some of that goes with, in my opinion, goes with the planning, because I mean, that's going to tell us where we're going to sit for that. So I mean, we can sit here and hash, you know, as far as, well, this or that, but at the end of the day, I mean, we're going to have to get some hard numbers as far as, okay, HVAC is this amount, this amount, and this is
And this allows
This is Plan A, this allows us to move from here to here. I mean, until I think we have that stuff, I think, in my opinion, it's hard to go through to put it.
And then in that plan, we really need to look at our other two buildings, and then look at what our prioritization is
Right.
as far as how that piece falls together, and then that would help me as far as where I can.
I think it's reasonable to say you have four twenty-five million dollar, ten-year bond cycles. I think if we, I mean, but at least?
Forty years.
Forty years, but if you're not going to go bigger than that twenty-five year, I think that's going to take, you don't have a choice.
Does it make sense to anyone, before really talking about numbers, to create what that vision is for the school district, like what we agree on elementary school-wise? If we think continuing that vision that was set back in nineteen seventy-nine, is that a vision we still want to work towards long run, with moving the middle school over there? Setting the vision for what we think should happen to the administration building, and putting that all-to-one vision?
I think we've done that.
I agree, yeah.
Well, I mean
I think we have. I think we've done some of that, but we still have to go through from the planning standpoint.
And verify too, like this year, year of this year, this, but I mean, we, I think we've listed in all of these, like the biggest ones, we've said what all our wants are, but you just had to put it into, this can happen with twenty-five million in this ten years, this can happen with twenty-five million in the next ten years. I think that's what we have to do.
So we're all on the same page if we want to do two elementary schools?
I would be.
I just want one, but that's just me.
Yeah, I would agree.
One?
So one.
One, one?
And that's true, I mean, at the end of the day, that comes down to planning.
Yes, definitely one.
We've kind of went around, but you know,
Or three, I mean, that's
I don't know that all board members have stated, you know, because that is a big play as far as what direction we're going, you know, are we going to do?
And I don't think we all agree on it either.
Two middle, or two grade schools, or some, you know, okay, with three, where are we at on that? Because I mean, that's going to also play in what direction we go in some of this as well.
That's going to play in too, if I believe moving forward on Roosevelt is a good choice or not, because for me to think, well, what is our vision? Is our vision one elementary school, then is that really the bond we want to do? Is it two elementary schools? Am I making sure that what we're working towards will support eventually going to two?
The other issue that we're going to have, and I'll, so Mike can speak on that some, I think that was somewhat what we ran into. Number one, previously, I don't know that any, or I shouldn't say any, that all board members really took a stance one way or the other as far as whether we wanted two, three, four grade schools. But the other thing is, what is the public to support? Because while there may be a couple of us that want one grade school, and it's been proven that it does work in other areas, I would be remiss if I truly felt anybody in this community would support it.
I would say you close a learning center, and you're going to have anarchy.
So, so I, I mean, while I think one definitely could be good, and could look at that, I don't think it's feasible for this community, and that's just me, my thoughts.
My, the end of the last
I would support two, I don't think, from a management standpoint, I think it's best to have one, but I don't think the public will see those aspects.
Say about drop off and pickup, is what I thought it failed.
Because I mean, like, if we're serious about doing one, then we wouldn't really want to focus more.
I was just doing happy, I didn't have to run through, I did like the day, Isaac's last day in Bothell, and I was taking pictures, I was like, I don't have to do this again.
At the, at the end of the last conversation, I mean, and maybe, maybe my memory is wrong with it, but when we were a year ago, in June, July, whenever that was, I was getting definitely this conversation of saying the steps of having several different bonds, which probably is the way it's going to have to be. But part of it with this plan that was actually put together, which was some of the talk, my memory was, what would be the base to work from? Not necessarily the first step of a series of bonds, but the base to start with. And the base of this is, the base is getting rid of the greatest liability of buildings, and walking away from Washington, at that time, we were even still talking about Washington, and walking away from Lincoln. It was also a matter of saying, what are some givens that have to be done? HVAC system is a given, we're going to be paying for it. There's, it's not a question of what the next series is going to happen. And the middle school, we're not getting rid of that building, not with every, I mean, that building is there, whether it's going to be a middle school, or it's going to be an elementary. And whether it's an elementary or a middle school, we are saying that cafeteria is too small. It doesn't matter which. So that one point two million dollars was set, you know, it's something that really made sense. And then when you talk about Roosevelt, Roosevelt is our newest building, I mean, newest elementary, and it was one that we would not walk away from it either. If you put two sections on it, it allows you to walk away from Lincoln, okay? But it also, the land there allows you to put another section on, or another, you could put another wing easily on that at a later date, when you go for that next, whatever that next plan is. If it's going to be a two, and I agree, I don't think this community would accept a one elementary, but they might do. It's a possibility they could go with two. And Roosevelt has the land, that you could put enough sections that that would be one of the, one of the two. So I was thinking that it wasn't necessarily the first step of a series of three bonds in that regard, it was more a matter of that base step, of just allowing, this makes sense, it doesn't matter what happens in the future, these are things that need to be done. HVAC needs to be done at the high school. A cafeteria at the middle school makes sense, it needs to be done. And taking care of the elementary issue at least that way, of being able to provide that for Roosevelt, again, it gives you that baseline, if the community supported it. If they allowed that to happen for ten years, and you, they paid the ten years on that, or fifteen or twelve, doesn't have to be ten, fifteen, it could be twelve years. If they paid on that, you end up having that time to really get a much better feel, plus if the second biggest reasons up there was trust of decisions made by the board, maybe, maybe the possibility of what's happened with the preschool just recently, and its completion, maybe that. And maybe this next bond, if it would pass, would be enough to generate all kinds of support, I mean, or let's just say, a different kind of support ten years from now.
And I think as we talked about before, that was part of it as well, because it gives people something tangible to see, and see, they see what the money is going through. But I think most of them, I agree with pretty well everything you said there, and at the end of the day, I think that all goes back to the same thing that we talked about, is I need the long-range planning. That is all part of the plan that needs to be put together, i.e. the baseline and everything else before we can do anything.
But when we talked back in July, the issue is, that, those steps you're talking about scares the bejesus out of a lot of people at this point. And that second step could keep people from voting for the first step, you know, but just simply because they're going, oh, if I pass this, then I'm going to be, they're expecting me to pay this much ten years from now. That's why I was thinking this was just a baseline, just set the stage, something that really allows us to walk away from, again, one of the buildings that you do not want to put an elevator in. You don't want to pay for an elevator in Lincoln. You don't want to do that. You don't want to end up putting that kind of money in a ninety-four year-old building. And this is a way you could do that and set the stage, because we're going to be putting money into that HVAC system at the high school, no matter what, over the next few years.
So, so I kind of, I get where you're coming from. And I, and the problem is, is that you do one bond issue, we don't know what will happen in ten years, if it'll happen. I mean, part of our problem, the first, you know, twenty sixteen, is that oil prices were so suppressed, everybody was afraid they were going to lose their job in the area. Things have gotten better, but not great. Now we're faced with agriculture tariffs and all that, you know, but we never know what the future will bring, is what I'm trying to get at. And it's going to be financial downside, financial upside. And I am thinking that moving forward, say, let's put thirty million here, because those are all identified as essential things that, I don't think anybody can argue that HVAC and H is high is not a problem. The renovating a school to close another, there's a cost savings there that we can say. And then the middle school, having had four kids through that middle school cafeteria, yeah, let's do something about that, that's pretty bad. But then, I guess part of my intent of looking, say, we were to go with something on thirty, and at this point, maybe we're really looking at thirty-two because of the increase in costs since we had originally looked at this, it may have to go up above that number. But then can we identify like, okay, so we're going to give up one school, we'll see a savings of this. We're going to be able to invest the capital outlay, so in the next ten years, with the capital outlay that's saved, we are going to take care of problem X, Y, and Z, even though it may say it's a bond. Reality is that ten years from now, say we do ten or fifteen, but Reality is that ten years from now, say we do ten or fifteen, but ten years from now, you can't wait that long. You're going to have to move forward a little bit quicker. But we would know what money is available for the capital outlay to plan that process. And maybe we're only looking at ten years of saying, here's the, what your investment will buy today. And then here's what you're, you know, by voting for this, the cost savings with capital investment is going to allow us to take care of these things during that interim. And then we'll see where we stand. Our enrollments are flat. You know, I think at first we thought we'd need more elementaries. We don't. In fact, we're down from what we built, so really it's a good time to phase down. I mean, that's a small incremental change that we're going to see. And, and she said, if we have it at Roosevelt, we can always do it. Myself, I like Wilson, but I won't bite that, you know, where it's at. So I, I guess I'm not worried about a twenty or forty-year plan.
No.
And I think this is it, but the ten-year plan is, it's the money we realize by investing this much. But we realize this much from your investment that we'll be able to take care of the rest. To me, the ten-year plan is what will we fix across the district in this ten years?
And the ten-year plan can end up making a tremendous difference of a survey done five years from now.
Sure.
I'm just saying, you, you, you end up having that work done in the next, if you did have that work done in the next couple of years.
It can be done.
And the, and the community saw what was done, and let's say it was done very well and people were very happy with it. You do another survey five years from now to get an idea of what that next step, ten years from now, when you're kind of, when the mill levy could slough off instead of actually putting it towards another bond. But it could change tremendously the results you get in, in, in that survey just five years from now. And that's what's so difficult. I understand completely the, the desire to end up having long range planning. But I, I also would say this, if, if people were doing it the way, if you really wanted to have the ideal situation, the most efficient situation of, of spending money here in Hayes, then a number of years ago, they should have went ahead and planned that new middle school out of the high school. They should have changed the old middle school into a, a big elementary. They should have closed some of the worst element. We know that. If you're talking about efficiency, it may not be what the community was supporting. But if you're talking about money and saving money, that is the most efficient way to do it. And that was the intent forty-three years ago when they were doing the planning.
I think that's a vision we should continue to carry on and pass on to future board members, is that vision that was set that long ago.
But I'm saying this plan is just a base that you can go, you can go different directions. This doesn't change any of those others. It doesn't commit you to those other, unless you were planning on getting rid of Roosevelt. Which I don't think that ever was a discussion.
But I like the ten-year window of looking where we want to be in the next ten years. But this, if that's, if we come back, look at the critical needs, get, get that identified, say, this is where we want to spend your money. But then, but have a pretty detailed outline, although it looks like we got a good start. But begin to lay it out and saying, you know, in the next ten years, this is it. And we'll have to come back and look where we are. It's hard to commit the resources. I, you know, and the analogy I'm thinking of is, you know, with the state, we think we're going to have, I say that, we never know. We should have gone out to visit the governor tonight and visited her tonight and tell her our case. But, but we think we can begin to look at a five-year window of where we want to go with salaries and needs and, you know, the insurance because we think we have. And I keep saying we think because it's up to legislature always. But we think we know what we're going to be doing for the next five years in terms of our budget share coming from the state. That's a great opportunity. This would give Rusty an opportunity too and all of us, so. And I understand the strategic planning, but I, you know, forty-year time span, I'll be ninety-eight, so I don't know. I don't want to wait that long. It won't matter to me one way or the other at that point, I guess. But, but I want to have something that we can show this community now and the kids that are in the, starting the school now or just in the early elementary grades. And take a start. That's why I supported the Oak Park project or building to be named, which will come up at some point. But the building to be named out there, it does show that we're doing it. It will free up some resources. It'll provide a little bit more. And we do save on taking that building out of operation. So maybe that will come to the trust. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'd like to step.
Another thing, and I think we've talked about this already, but we need to make sure that we add into the mix that this bond will pay for some things and then if does free up money to make improvements to Wilson and Aloffen. Because we don't want to make sure parents at those schools don't feel they're being left out. And it will, it will allow us to free up money from the high school.
But our responsibility is to every building in the district too, which is what I think, to me, that's an important part. Because then we're taking care for a, I won't say minimal investment, but for a essential investment. Because we're reviewing our essentials. There's no, there's no new theater, which I wish we'd have a new theater. There's no swimming pools. There is none of that there. These are just things that you walk in there. If I put you in the middle school and let you have lunch with those kids, you'll walk out crazy man, you know. You'll say, yes, please do it, or surprised anybody wants to walk there or something. But it would allow us to raise all, again, raise everybody up, raise every school up. And, uh, yeah, which would make good use of the resources that we have. And the fact that people are going to oppose a tax, I guess that's part of it. But then I look back at the things you said, the people, you know, trying to sell it, reason supporting bond issue. The fact that we're split over four major categories means that we failed to message clearly what the most essential one thing is that you have to know. As Curly did, you know, City Sleeper, what's that one thing? I don't know if we have it.
Well, now, when we did, I, I agree. I do want to point out too on this, one thing we were trying to do, because we, we were getting that message of, what is the clear message? What are we doing here? And what are we doing here? But when you're talking about this, the message, when you do get it down to that, it's real easy. Three things.
That's right. You're right.
There's just three items. You're, you're dealing with as far as a message, if you're trying to be as simple as can be in sharing with the community, what is that money going towards? It, it's three items is what's happening there.
Yeah, maybe that's an easier sell. I don't know.
And of them, I think most everybody does understand the need for HVAC. You know, it's forty, I think a lot of people may even understand renovating and updating Roosevelt. I don't think a lot of people truly understand the needs that exist with that cafeteria at the middle school unless you're there while lunch is going on. I, I think if they go visit, if they go visit and, and they're not having lunch, you can walk through and you don't get, you don't get the, you don't get the picture.
The claustrophobia.
You don't.
Yeah. So you need from us some direction?
Actually, no, I, I, this is fantastic of just having the conversation. The, the issue's more a matter of saying, what does the board want to do with it? Do they want to go ahead and keep moving with this? Will there be another, will we have it on the board agenda in July, in August? Will we start having discussions again as to what to do? Is this a plan, a review of your work that you want to continue to work towards it and refine? Do you want to bring DLR back in and share ideas with that? Is there enough information because of the last two bonds that were tried and the survey that we do have the information? It's just a matter of the, what is the timeline? When do, if, if your issue there is, I want you to know right now, you could, you could have, I did check with Dustin, just so there's answers there. Dustin AV did say that it is possible to have a bond by November. If it's not November, it'd be January is the next, because you have to wait sixty days since, you know, after a, a general election. So you're talking about November, January, or any time after that, you know. What your timeframe is, do you want to have an election in twenty twenty? If that is your decide, maybe that's part of this is, what's your timeline? When, when are you wanting to have this done? Because boy, it changes the, the work schedule then of when you gotta start talking and schedule exactly what you need. Maybe that's part of this of saying, okay, we are committed, we're going to have it. And this is kind of when we want to have a bond election. And we're going to work towards that at this point.
I think September, twenty twenty is feasible. The other thing we have to look at too is we could have four new board members too. We definitely could, so.
Transition to super.
Yeah, there's a whole lot going on here.
And, and.
No, that's, that's.
But you have, I'll just put it this way, Lance, this board has control to lead it to a direction. If you want, you can have that set, I mean, you've committed your time into it. You've put all this in. You can have made that decision and say, we want a bond election in March. And it's already, it's, it's going to be set then. Even though new people come in in January, you're still going to have that election in March.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll be honest with this current one. I would want to take HVAC out of it. This is just not a glamorous.
It's not glamorous, but it's.
You're right, it's not very glamorous, but it's something that's essential.
Yeah, but I mean, people do want to see their money physically do something. And I think they'll see that with the renovation and with the cafeteria. But I think you might lose some support with HVAC. And I know you can do more than one bond on a ballot too, if we separate them out, Roosevelt one and the other.
They didn't go over real well though.
Um, we tried doing two questions before.
Yeah.
We had three.
Or three, yeah. It was extremely confusing.
We, we did, that did.
Go very well.
Yeah, twenty sixteen.
No matter what bond we do, you're not going to appease everybody. I mean, because the other thing, yeah, we have to keep in mind as well is whether it's the, you know, forsaken argument, somebody's kid that's just starting kindergarten. I mean, they maybe could care less about the cafeteria at the middle school, because that's not going to affect them for, you know, how many years?
They'll fix it by the time you get there.
So it's, it's one of those, no matter what we do, I mean, it's, you're never going to appease everybody in my opinion on that.
I mean, throwing out the HVAC will also lower the number.
Well, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
It's going to lower the number on the front end, but it's going to raise the number on the back end because I'm not going to be able, I'm not going to be able to go out and do some of the other work that needs to happen. And if we do have a catastrophic failure, now you're looking at no fund warrants. That's going to be worse than having it on the bond.
Well, I still think we need to get it under that certain level. I mean, if that's the case, then I think we should just go back to eighty million dollars.
I think there's a couple of ways to do that. Let's say we have a thirty million dollar bond and we stretch it out to thirteen years. It might get us enough money, right, instead of saying ten. So my point is we want to keep it under whatever fifteen dollars or whatever the things were. That's probably what we want to do. Stretch it out slightly. We don't want to go for thirty because that's too many years.
Yeah.
I think we can find a way. I guess my opinion is, well, let's see, it's already June. Probably November's too quick, but I really don't want to wait till November of twenty twenty. I'm willing to do so if the rest of the board is, but I think we should probably move a little more quickly than that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. Uh, I was saying that I would like to move more quickly than we're discussing. I'm not sure we can do this before November of nineteen, but I'm not sure I want to wait till November of twenty twenty. So I'd be more like a March or something in twenty twenty.
March is interesting.
However, I'm open to Dean Suede if everyone else thinks we should wait till next November.
Well, yeah, picking a date, working back, laying out a ten-year plan, and, and that's my s- I don't think a forty-year plan is. I think people can see a ten-year horizon. I'm not sure a forty-year horizon would be.
I just mean a plan of some sort. I'm not saying, I'm not saying a forty-year plan.
Yeah, and I think the plan would be this and then Rusty redoing, saying, well, if you give me this, then I promise you every building is going to look spick and span. Not really, but be better than what they are today. Walk away from one school or whatever it may be. I think that is part of the plan is over the next ten years, here's what you will see. And we promise, that's, that's the promise we're making, but.
Well, you need to have enough time to really do a great job in communicating because that other piece of information that hadn't been shared is the survey afterwards of the survey, the look at the voters who actually did vote. Remember, there was only twenty-some percent of our parents that went to our schools, parents that have kids coming to public schools to vote. So if only twenty-some percent voted, that's a tell right there. The tell of saying they're the ones that have their kids going to school, the question is, was it just not a good plan? Did they not understand it as far as what they want to vote? But, but right there is something that has to change for the next bond.
Are they registered?
Are they, are they registered? Yeah.
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 Yeah, because actually our turnout for the second one, the second, the higher, the lower bond was actually failed by worse than what the higher bond is.
That's right.
Yeah, we ran that one, what time here again? November, no.
June sixth, November seventh.
Yeah, that one was in November, right. The other one was in June.
Well, the reason we ran the first one in June was because we were told that it was not a good idea to put it on with the national one. And then the second go around, then we were told it was a good idea. So that was one of the reasons we ran it.
I don't think it.
I don't know that.
I think if they're going to go out and vote.
They're going to vote, they're going to vote.
Well, I think if there's a bigger election, you're probably going to draw people in. They're going to go vote just for one thing.
Yeah. Well, March, I mean, picking a date to target towards, which then we can backdate where we want to start the work timeline. March sounds like a good time.
Are there, are there times, Mike, that are better than others? I mean, do we need to look at or take into account?
You mentioned already that you get, we've heard both, I've heard both sides.
Right.
It's better to do it during a national election because more people show up.
Sure.
On the other hand, it's better to do it not during a national election because fewer people show up, the ones that are really dedicated. And then you get to complicated factors of who's going to vote during the national election, like voting in opposition to the person who's in office. And therefore they're angry with that person. Are they going to influence our votes for this bond? Is it?
Yes.
I think we, I don't have an answer for that.
You know, what, what's better?
Well, let me, let me ask this. November of nineteen is out.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
November of twenty is too long. So we're looking in between, so we're looking somewhere in between January and sixty days before the November, because that has to be sixty days before the other November. So you're looking between January and then September.
Yeah.
Somewhere in between January and September of twenty twenty is what you're looking at.
That seems, seems good. I don't think I want to go in November twenty twenty. It might be a busy election.
And some say, I think this is probably good. You probably don't want to have it during the summertime. I've heard that many times. The summer's not really, you want to have it when school is still in session. Whether it's the March, April, May, or September.
Would we want to target a date that is before summer so construction can start during the summer? Or how long does it take, I guess, for funding to come in after a bond goes?
Going to stuff done if they done March, do you think? No.
Doesn't it usually take about six months?
I don't know if that would.
I'm not sure.
Play.
I like the idea, but I'm not sure it can go that quickly.
It's a consideration.
Why don't we just sort of, I mean, we're saying between January and September. Something around there and then see if that, see if we can put a plan together before then.
So would it be helpful if we could create the timeline that we had the last time and show you what it might look like for different dates?
I'd say, yeah, showing us what it might look like because we're not making any decisions.
Again, I'd like to see for September as well.
And Lance did say something that everybody needs to hear again is when he mentioned, since it's been beyond twenty-five years, we do not have to wait for the Board of, the State Board of Education to approve it. And, and because of the number, the number of how big it is, I think it'd have to be almost fifty, fifty million for, hey, I think that was the number for that approval as well, since it's the size that it is. It also allows us to move faster. So actually, we're not going to be, whenever you decide, it's not going to be hampered by time of waiting for the State Board of E- Education to give us approval. It's more a matter of our own local just getting it arranged and that is at the least sixty days. You'll probably want more than that, but at least sixty days has to be provided for that. You'll probably want more than that, but at least 60 days has to be provided for that.
Okay.
Well, if you make the other question discussion.
So we want one elementary, two elementary, three? Because the decision, whatever, that, that does guide, as everybody pointed out, that really does just guide some of what we wanna do.
Well, at, at the end of the day, I mean, I agree with that, but I mean, I think we need to take Rusty's list, everything else, and put in there and find out, okay, these are the things that we need to make sure in this bond. At the end of the day, that needs to be added up. What number are we at? Because that's gonna tell us where, where we need to be, and if we either need to start lopping stuff off and save it for the next time, or.
Yeah.
I mean, there has to be some sort of planning on that stuff before we go forward.
Well, that's why I'm saying, pick the number, put in the essential things, which are these the essential things? Then run the numbers about what else happens in that timeframe. Right? That's, is that kinda where you're coming at? Because I, I think if we add everything together, we know it's about 104 million.
I suppose you could pick a number, or, or do you go through and, I mean, working with Rusty and the other stuff, we go through and find, you know, i.e. the HVAC, the cafeteria, the.
Right.
Whatever the four or five items are, and at the end of the day, then go back to ELR, whoever. Okay, where are we at? We'll all park at these items. Where does that put us?
Well, so that's, so that's the question now, is are these the things that you would put up first, or do you have a different choice? Those are?
These are. Based on the monies you have, and blocks being discussed.
What would you add if you had one additional piece that you'd wanna add to that?
That's a good question. I really couldn't answer that without knowing, we're looking at going with the elementarys, because I really do have concern where I'm at with Wilson and Roosevelt, with my HVAC in there too.
So we do kinda decide an elementary.
I agree.
But these are, and if these are the essentials that you've identified, that, so that part may be done. If these are the things that Rusty's identified, it's like, hey, get these done, and we can do so much more, I think.
Well, and I, I'd say that's based on how we've identified our buildings. I mean, where we put our priority with our buildings, as far as one, two, three with our buildings. Past that, you start, this is the essential things, then past that, then you'd have to start looking at where your priority is with your next set of buildings.
And that would come in to me, if we have a cap, that comes into how you reprioritize your capital outlay. Because that's money, if that happens, then that's available for you to plan. And what you're asking, Paul, it is projects, okay, you're talking projects. I would say, different than my mindset, the first 18 months I was here, the last 18 months I was here was more from the standpoint of exactly what you're doing, but not with projects, but with buildings.
Yeah.
Get rid of Munger, get rid of Washington, get rid of Lincoln, get rid of Westside, get rid of Rockwell. It was more a matter of get rid of those particular buildings that basically you don't wanna put money into in the future. If you're not putting money into them, then you gotta say, effectively, no matter what, effectively, you're putting money somewhere else that makes much more sense. And when I'm saying about the, the plumbing or the sewer at Washington, it's not too big of a different story as Lincoln. Okay, so. It's about the same situation. But with, and that's, I guess, is where you are talking about, is what are the projects that can happen? We've already knocked off two of the buildings that you've talked about, so.
Right.
We oughta get some shrinkage in that part of the capital outlay that can then reapply elsewhere.
Rust is always gonna be a consideration, because of your party or outside envelope, so you're gonna be looking at those. We've already sorted out those on our location, so that part's there. If you look at a whole, the department of what we deal with, the chief complaint in this district is the HVAC. That is probably with staff and everybody else, the highest complaint that I have, and it's consistent throughout the district. So that would be where I, my focus would be, and not simply just because it's the chief complaint, but it's also probably the highest failure point.
Okay, and that's triage-wise, that's where we should go with it. So I'm gonna ask a question. So how many elementarys do we want? Because that does affect everything else in your planning, doesn't it?
It does, but I don't know that, it's like he was saying with the base, I don't know that that affects me. I can sort of bring in sort of where we're at, what we currently have, and show you that, and put some budget figures to that.
All right, that may help.
And that might help you then decide where you wanna go as far as your elementarys then.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds to me like, okay, if we, if we're able to pass a bond and revitalize, whatever, improve Roosevelt, then we can close Lincoln. Then we have Roosevelt, Olafman, Wilson. And then, the next time we pass a bond, or what do we do? That's when we either go down to elementary schools, or. Or build, or build a middle school, and as we talked about before, move the middle school up, open up the middle school for elementary school. And make it out to two, and we can close Wilson.
Let's say, come back to that idea in five years.
Sounds like it.
I mean, it sounds like.
Yeah, I think so.
You have to be careful though, because if you go that route, that's already more money than what you decided you would go for this go-around, so that plan wouldn't work at that.
Yeah.
I agree. That's the dilemma we have, is that, which is probably why for at least the second bond we went for, which again failed, but it was because we needed a big infusion of cash to make sure we take over two bonds. Because, yeah, let's say we get, we improve Wilson, close Lincoln, we have, again, I say, what's that, Roosevelt? We have three elementary schools, and then we, it would cost a lot of money to expand Wilson.
Right. A perspective, just to help, I know we're talking here 30, 40 years down the road, okay? Some of that's been stated. You know, 30, 40 years ago is when we had the first last building, which was the high school. Okay, so we're using the same timeframe, 40 years in the future, 40 years in the past. The board members 40 years ago talking as far as what's gonna happen in the next 40 years, and what's gonna be planned. I, I don't care what their planning is, things change in such a way, they have no idea what is going to be, you know, some of the factors with that. And, and basically, in the last 40 years, this community has provided $10 million of bonds in the last 40, in the last 40 years. $10 million. That's a good point. So that means, using historical perspectives, planning for 40 years may be a hollow endeavor, right? I, I am saying.
But I like the plan we have, if it allows us to sort of.
Yeah, yeah, but I agree with you. You do what you can do.
Well, and I, and I am curious about, you know, some of the things that we have coming down the pike in terms of curriculum push with.
You know, as Commissioner Watson achieves his vision of everybody knowing Kansas Can Design, well, are we, are we gonna have to be putting money to upgrading our CT pathways, aiming down to the middle school? And how does that impact the space there? So, I mean, these are some things on a five-year horizon that niggle at the back of my mind. In my job, I worry about preparing people to teach these things. But, you know, that's, again, as you said, things will change, but I haven't, I'm, I don't know where the state is gonna be pushing us to go to in terms of what is the expected curriculum to be achieved. But that seems to be coming pretty hot and heavy with the Kansas Can Design. But, as you said, I don't know what we'll need, but I'm not sure our facilities. I think that's a different type of issue that we'll have to deal with in the next five years anyway.
The idea, why at least to the next.
I'm sorry.
That might be the wider conversation, though, that means at least to the next phase. I mean, it's hard to know now, so that will be what can help for helping next.
Right.
And I know, I hear you say, what about the elementary? I think, as some of you have said too, we really need to, if you move forward with the base essential, and then look down the road, just need to do a lot of work with our families. What do they want? What will they support? When you put a bond out there and it reconfigures schools, what are they voting no to? Reconfiguration or the improvement of the law? So what you do know now, and unless something changes with kindergarten, our parents are saying they want Roosevelt, I mean, first choice. When they come into our school, we could have that five section at Roosevelt. There are your three elementarys.
Yeah.
That's what, what it's looking like they're saying, if we're trying to guess.
It's a good point. It does say three elementary, doesn't it? Because Lincoln's 41, 23, 21.
And of those, most are siblings.
I'm sorry?
Most are siblings.
Oh, okay. I'll let.
I mean, when you look at that spreadsheet, of those that have that as their first choice, John, you would agree? I'd say all that may be five, six.
Yeah.
97% are siblings, so the families are there. And it isn't, it's not easy to close a school, but that is a telling about what the public's wanting for.
No, that's a good point.
For whatever reason. Like John said earlier, maybe it's because we keep talking about closing Lincoln, and there's that. So I don't know if that will change or not, but that's where you're at.
I think it's also the cafeteria is in the basement, next to the sun pump or whatever, so I think it's time to move away from Lincoln.
Yeah. So is it possible that, I guess, maybe a direction is, so I think whatever plan we do, we're gonna have to ban some of the elementary school. Well, not, well, not abandon it, it's walk away, because of efficiency or cost, whatever it is. But looking at the plan is like, what would happen if we do walk away? And, and at this point, three, maybe that is the right number. It seems to be what you're indicating here.
I don't think if you, I think only with 25 million, you're still gonna have three. I don't think you can eliminate two.
No, that's what I'm saying. So we would go to three elementarys. So that gives the projecting of the projects to look at.
Three for the next 15 years, and then maybe we'll get two down the road.
Well, yeah. And maybe Hays will have a sudden population explosion, so. It'll be like Las Vegas and building schools every, every year will have a new.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Probably not gonna happen right away, but that does. Well, as far as direction goes, I do hear you saying that we can get information as far as timeline going into that. And we'll end up having, that can be done in, in the next week, of having timelines, several different ones, to share with you as, as far as what's possible. Using that range between January of 2020 and September 2020. Then also, you were asking some information as far as the.
The allocation.
Yes, the allocation. Then there, third, I would say, third, I'm hearing you say, it makes sense to probably have this discussion one time a month. I mean, probably the one, the second meeting in July, a meeting in August. There needs to probably have that on the agenda to talk about it, even if it's, you know, a time limit on the conversation. But at least start talking regularly about it. Or if, if you don't, you're not gonna get your timeframe. Yeah. And so on those plans, as we're looking at it, the projects, I think it is a, as much a, you know, is maybe coming aboard, but us considering a 10-year frame of what happens, and what, what priorities are. And on estimating costs that may, and for money available, I said 25, but we've talked 30, but I would run a range 30 plus minus five. I think when you were talking, it's not a matter of the total amount right now, it's a matter of that it's under $15 for a $150,000 home. I think that's how it has to be figured, and I think that's what we're, we were talking about. I think that's what the survey indicated as well, that it needed to be between 10 and, and $15 for a $150,000 home. So it's maybe not a matter of saying 25 million or 30 million, it's a matter of saying it needs to be between 10 and $15 increase is what it needs to be. Between 10 and 15 years? Right. Okay. That gives us everything we need on that. And I think a 10, 15, a 10, 15, 10, 15 would work. 10, 15 for years, and 10, 15 for dollars increase in taxes. That, that may be where we're, we're working from, as far, as far as what kind of plan would be created. And then thinking of a 10-year window of where we're headed. Although five years may come up, you know, we don't. Five years of thinking, five years to get ready.
I think it'd be good to have those monthly discussions during our board meetings, because that would give folks in the community a chance to come to the meetings and express their opinions during our open discussion. Because we don't, we're not making a plan here, but it's gonna be perceived as we're making a plan, and so I think it's good to get feedback from the public.
I will pay money if you get people to come. I hope you come back.
Go back just as.
Oh, yeah, I might just be obnoxious out in the crowd or something.
Who are you gonna pay the money to? No, I, show up.
If Mike gets over here, I won't be surprised.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, well, we have, you're right, we have a lot of.
But we wanna make sure.
Yeah. And we, but we have a lot of information already. We know what we need. It's a matter of lining it up, I guess, is where it's at. Line it up for 10 years. Do have one question for you, as far as the timeline on giving you some of this information. What are, what are you thinking? Because right, right now, I'm up to my eyeballs in alligators. I've got a lot of projects going. Are you looking at like an August timeframe for it, or are you looking at?
I think, Rusty, I would think that is probably reasonable, because of the amount of transition we have going on right now.
So if I look at like August or September board meeting, do you bring something in?
I would.
Because we have expectation setting that's gonna take priority.
Right, which is August 6th, so.
And then, do we meet twice in July? We meet the first.
I don't remember.
First meeting is the reorganization.
When is your last day? I will be on through, I will stay for both board meetings in July, just in meetings, and then helping out in the evenings.
But the first July meeting is more of an organization, redesign.
It can still have other topics on it if you choose, and it tends to be a shorter meeting anyway, so you may want to.
It's July 3rd.
July 1st.
July 1st.
Thank you.
And I think I'm gonna miss the second July meeting anyway.
22nd?
20, no, I'll be back. I've gotta walk in DC, so. I'll go hit up legislators and talk.
Make for money.
Probably will, but.
Do you get to see legislators? Every time I go to DC, I just get to see the aides.
I've never seen one.
I gotta take a picture with Pat Roberts one time, but that was, just a photo op, not really a discussion opportunity.
I got to see him once, because he thought I was with the corn farmers. Then he found out I wasn't.
He was with like the corn farmers, and I still.
Yeah, but he took the corn farmers back in his back room upstairs.
We get to take pictures.
Nah, but as an educator, yeah. If there's a science educator, yeah. Anyway. We will put on the agenda at this point, at least tentatively, for the second meeting in July, to talk to you. But to help it guide us, you do, do put a set limit, because a set amount of time, we do, 15 minutes, whatever it may be, right? And then. Well, I think that, I think you're gonna need to do that, because you can get on this and spend an hour and a half of a board meeting on it. And if you just have, yeah, if you set amount, and you're gonna talk for 20 minutes on this, and you're done, and you move on, that'd probably be the healthy way to do it. But the other piece I would add.
And then you do that with a lot of topics. There's certain ones that really just need like.
That's true. But what I would ask is that, just thinking about one or two targeted questions that would facilitate our thinking, so that we're not just saying, okay, let's talk about, you know, maybe it's back to say. Well, I, I would suspect that the first one in July will be the timeline. Boy, I'll talk to the two pretending there. Because that's what you're asking for, is Dustin Avey working with us, of finding a timeline, saying if it's September, working backwards. If it's not September, it's March working backwards. If it's January, working backwards, and just giving you like three scenarios of what that, what that's gonna look like. Those would be great. And then I think the other piece is weigh in, that would make sense not just to the board, but to the community at large, about what do we gain by, if we go with a plan like this, not saying this is the plan we go with, but what do we gain by going to three elementary schools? Because we're saying that seems like where we have to go based on the data we see, but, you know, what, what are the real gains from that? Educationally, financially, I think we, I think people understand there is financial, so I'm not asking Rusty to estimate that. But maybe from, maybe your view.
What are our savings every year if we close one building?
Yeah, I think that we can get, but I'm looking at what are we gonna gain educationally with that? Will that, will it affect our funding for Title III money, for example? Because right now, is Lincoln, no, Title II?
Well, Title I is based on low SES, but I actually, I don't know.
I mean, I think there's an impact. Actually, the reason, the reason why we don't know, and we've had the conversation, is when people say, if, if we did vacate Lincoln, you gotta understand, that doesn't mean that they're all going to Roosevelt.
No.
There's gonna be, they're gonna go to different buildings. Some of Wilson may go to Roosevelt. I mean, it's gonna shuffle, is what's gonna happen.
Okay, but I just.
It actually could, it's hard to know until they get to a school, but it should help Wilson get to the threshold of Title I when they're knocking down, because you have the students spread among three versus. the students spread among three versus highly populated in one, so then you have services available.
Right. And that's, but, I mean, it's all projection.
Possibility.
But it's, it's, you know, it's part of that, what are the unintended consequences of our decision? Or, in this case, maybe it's a good consequence that, that allows us to keep funding at a certain level, external, because that helps the overall operation. So, I, it's just a consideration I'm, I'd be wanting to think about.
Sure.
It just depends.
We'll be there. Okay.
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 Well, John, I think, sort of what Paul was saying earlier about giving us some direction when we have these discussions, just like you did today. I think it was very good for you to walk through and point out where we ended up six months ago or more. Because I tend to kind of forget where we are for things, so.
And Ron, you're supposed to remember all of this.
I got it now.
I was gonna say, Ron.
Ron.
That was very good, thanks.
Yeah. And I, and I do appreciate the graphic that says, do we have neighborhood schools in Hays? And the answer is?
No.
No.
I think we do.
Although for the person that lives next to the building, yes, that's my neighborhood, but the reality is, no. So that's, that is an important piece.
We didn't spend a lot of time on the Google Maps, but I assure you, you compare two years ago to now, they're very much the same. They're spread. It's not, it's not a matter of identifying, saying, oh, it's, Roosevelt is all just on the, on the east side of Vine Street. That is not true.
No, it's not. So it's good to see. And I will say, you know, part of our problem may be just, is that our custodial staff is too good a job to not make the buildings look more. I, they actually, I mean, you go in, they seem okay till you get below the infrastructure, but.
Always overstimulated.
Stop being so.
Actually, one part to me that set, set that tone, I mean, it's, it's been maintained well prior to my tenure, and, you know.
Taking, doing less or more with less to a whole new level.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, so it's a compliment to you and your predecessors, but I think the public needs to understand is that they are wearing down. I gave my kids, let them take my 2001 Suburban, and my son told me, Dad, the engine motor doesn't work. Well, dang it, take some tape and tape that window up.
You would never take a 30-year note on your house and not do any repairs for 30 year.
It doesn't make sense.
You wouldn't put in a new hot water heater or a new roof or, I mean, there's just, this is ludicrous to think that way with a school, so.
There's just a lot of buildings that.
You're right.
That's, that's what I try and explain to people, like, you wouldn't do that to your own personal property, so.
It's, it's time, and.
The individuals that did the study on the demographics, RSP, when they did that, I do want to point out that if they, if this community just had money, and they were going to just drop a elementary in, on, into Hays, a brand-new building, they would be recommending it would go in the quadrant north of 27th and west of Hall Street.
Yeah.
It would go there.
I could do.
Okay. So, so is there any support?
James 13.
What's that?
James 13.
Okay. Well, since I, I think we're getting near the end, we could go.
I would be good with that.
Yeah. So John, I want, I won't be here the 17th. I've gotta go give a talk, or I was told not to be too sciency, so this is a challenge, man. I can't believe it, that's what they told me. You can't be sciency. But I want to thank you, I've enjoyed working with you, because I won't be here the 17th. I know you have a reception later, but I won't be here at the final meeting. So, thank you for doing it and keeping us on track to move forward on the bond issue. Hasn't been pleasant to keep pushing us, or to deal with the setbacks with the votes in the community, but you've kept your eye on the prize and the target, have helped us move forward, and everything, John, so I appreciate working with you.
Actually, Paul, what's amazing is for this board to do what they've done. I mean, when you consider this, in '16, you have this, you know, in '17, you have that. This is, I mean, actually, it's really amazing what the board is doing. And I still throw out to all of you to understand, most bonds take three tries to pass. Most. So for anybody to think that there's been failure in this process, it's process. It's not, there's, there's not failure here. It's just a matter of trying you to understand, keep moving with it. You're not done. Just keep moving.
What you're saying is, we should go for another 90 million?
That's not what I'm saying. That is not what I said.
He can pretty much say whatever he wants as he goes out the door, so it's okay.
No, you're right, I know.
But thank you, thank you for helping us continue the process. John, I appreciate it a lot.
Very good.
Thank you guys, the meeting is adjourned.
Very good.
Thanks. Thank you very much.